Call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, October 25th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Marv will you call the roll please? Lanyon.
Present.
Pratt.
Present.
Bellinger.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Gilroy.
Present.
Hanson.
Present.
All right. I'm looking for approval of the agenda this evening unless there are changes that need to be made.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, do I have support?
Second.
All right, thank you both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes for presentation. I'm not seeing anyone out there, so we'll move right along. We've got our council meeting minutes of October 11th, 2021. I'm looking for a motion to approve unless there's changes that need to be made.
So moved.
Thank you, do I have support?
Support.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Noah, it's accounts payable time and you had an opportunity to review.
Yes, I did, and I went through them all, and if you need them, there's a big folder over there with Barb. But I didn't find anything that was out of place for that, so if there's any questions for that. With that being said, I'd like to approve check 74799 dated 10/8 through check 74849 dated 10/14 and ACH 150 through 155 in a total of $25,555.41.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding our accounts payable this meeting? All right, I'm looking for support.
Supporting.
All right, thank you both. Barb, will you call the roll?
Bellinger.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. Moving along to our action items for this evening, our first is the tax penalty letter, and it is a letter from Betty Eigenauer? Eigenauer? From 435 North Upton Street. Corey, you want to give us just a little bit of background on this, or Rachel, who?
I would prefer Rachel.
All right, Rachel?
Sure. Jan, Miss Betty Eigenauer's daughter, called back in the beginning of October and said that she paid her mom's property taxes late and she wanted a waiver on the penalty and interest. And I explained to her that I don't have the authority to waive penalty, especially that late. I mean, sometimes if it falls on a weekend, we have some grace time as far as the penalty goes. But I told her that council had the authority to waive the penalty, but not the interest. The Michigan General Property Tax Act requires that we charge interest after October 1st. And so I explained to her that if she wanted the penalty waived, she would have to make the request in writing to the city council.
All right. Council, any questions from Rachel, or discussion?
Do you?
Go ahead, Noah, and then-
The total is 105, how much is penalty and how much is interest?
The penalty is 104.04, the interest is $1.04.
$1.04.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've done this in the past, I'm not sure.
I believe you have, yes.
I think we have, and it was probably about three or four years ago that we had somebody request, and I believe we just-
Just remember.
Yeah, we believe that. And we always take these cases on a case-by-case basis, we don't try to set precedence with anything.
That's what I was trying to say.
Right. So we look at each case individually and, you know, take into consideration. Rachel, do you know how late her payment was? I'm sure it prob- and I know she's doing this for her mom, so it probably was just something maybe that wasn't on her radar.
I think so, I think that is the case. I think she paid it, they're due September 14th, and I believe it was paid on the 20th.
Okay, so we're talking a couple days.
And it sounds like the daughter from here on out has taken over the responsibility of making sure that the taxes are paid on time.
I would entertain a motion if a council member would like to make one.
I'd make a motion to forgive the tax penalty to Mrs. Betty Eigenauer in the amount of
$104.04. All right, thank you very much. Tom, do I have support for this motion brought forward?
Second.
Okay.
We'll give it to you.
Thank you.
Was that Brandon or Harvey down there?
I'll leave it.
All right, awesome. Is there any other further discussion before I call for the roll on this? No? All right, Barb, will you call the roll?
Ryan.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
All right, thank you, council, I appreciate that. And Rachel, if you please, extend our appreciation for her coming forward and asking for that, because it's not often that that happens, and so.
Sure, I'll do that.
Thank you. All right, next on our list is traffic control order number 32 for Church and Menetter intersection, and we have Chief here, so I'm going to go ahead and just turn this right over to you, Chief.
I was contacted by the superintendent of schools who expressed concerns about that intersection down there. That's a pretty heavily trafficked intersection for the middle school kids getting out and going across there. He expressed concerns that the cars are parked really close up to that crosswalk, and there have been a few close calls, quote-unquote. Talking with our city manager, we thought it would be appropriate to put a no parking beyond a sign, which is approximately, if I recall correctly, 30 feet back, was it? There was already an existing poster, we measured it out, and it would have kept cars away to keep that intersection more open. I don't see this, I still think we should do that, just to keep it open and clear, and based that we don't have a crossing guard there, since we've added that third crossing guard, it's really helped with the safety of the kids. I don't foresee any kind of police enforcement action needed there. I think this is more of an awareness thing, so people can see that.
All right, great. Do I have any questions for Chief regarding this? Okay. And it looks like on the backside, it's a 40-foot west from the pedestrian crossing, which I think that's fantastic that we're going to take care of that. I know it's kind of an odd intersection, because it's not a traditional four-way, it's the drive-through and then the stop sign on Menetter, correct?
Correct.
Traveling east and west on Church, and then the stop at Menetter. Yep. So, all right. If there's no other questions for Chief, then I would be looking for that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve traffic control order number 33.
Two.
32, friendly amendment, 32.
All right, thank you so much.
And I'll support that.
Thank you both. If there's no other discussion, Barb, will you call the roll for this, please?
Ryan.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
All right. Next, we have traffic control order number 33, the southeast quadrant parking lot regulations. And Corey, I'll turn it over to you for this one.
Thank you. So, I worked with Chief on this, so the formal action is the traffic control order, but I thought I'd spend a little bit of time going over the supplemental materials. So this isn't completely new, as we talked about this two meetings ago when the ordinance amendment came up, and there were questions about what that was eventually leading to based on the DDA recommendation in September. So what I did in the packet is I included the background materials from that process with the DDA that included the staff memo as well as a presentation. In lieu of doing that presentation here tonight, I just gave you the slides, and if you have any specific questions, we can go over that. To bottom line, the traffic control order would create five time-limited spaces in the southeast quadrant parking lot. The signs would indicate no 30-minute parking from 8:00 to 6:00, Monday through Saturday, in recognition of the competition for spaces that happen primarily in the afternoons and early evenings between the retail uses and the restaurant uses. And so, as part of our process with the DDA, I put together a table of each of the quadrants, because I think one of the big questions was why this lot and not other lots? And I think that's a fair question that we will likely get. And so, you can see in that table, you know, if you count the public and private spaces, and you compare that to both the number of businesses, but then I thought a more important statistic was what kind of parking space demand does each use have in a given lot? And so, I had to make a couple of judgment calls. For example, there may have been, you know, a restaurant or movie theater that I didn't know the exact capacity of, and trying to put this together, but I came up with our best estimate, and I used the zoning code as a standard. So technically, in the downtown, businesses are exempt from having to provide spaces on their own. We have a lot of zero-outline buildings in the downtown, so nobody has the mood to create a parking lot. And so, I really thought it was interesting, when I went in there with that mindset, it ended up revealing that that parking lot has the biggest demand for parking spaces according to the types of uses and the fewest number of combined public and private spaces. So I thought that was instructive, and I think as we went through this process with the DDA, that was probably a helpful piece of information to get them to make in this recommendation. I put in there that as staff, you know, we've been hearing about these concerns really since the parking lot was in design phase, and certainly the hardware stores have been the loudest voice on this issue. But in talking with some of the other businesses, I'd say many don't have any care about it. In fact, that's, I think, where a lot of the pressure comes from, is that those businesses end up parking in the lot for, you know, their shifts, so their employees are there for eight hours or so. And we've tried sort of the gentle approach of, you know, here's a letter. I've had multiple conversations with several of the business owners, and it just doesn't really take hold as far as trying to, you know, utilize other parking lots, such as the Methodist Church lot, for that longer-duration parking. So, one of the key themes of the meetings we had with the DDA was, you know, what can we do that's an incremental approach that doesn't, you know, create a huge enforcement need on a police department, but that might provide a bit of a middle ground here as far as, you know, meeting with some of these concerns that we've been hearing? And so, the proposal as drafted, we think, does that. I've had a lot of discussions with Chief, and I know Chief has talked with some of the businesses about this as well. You know, we've tried to address some of the key concerns, which is, you know, are we going to be getting calls at minute 31, and, you know, what's our tactic going to be there? How are we going to handle this if it is approved and, you know, people don't really realize? So, you know, taking a warning approach. And then the final thing was really just being clear that this will be, you know, reactionary. We're not going to become, you know, the parking police, we don't have the resources to do that. But, you know, really trying to take an effort at the beginning to make people aware of the change, and whether it's through warning slips, you know, and kind of tracking it that way. Chief can certainly talk to that a little bit further. So, in lieu of the full presentation, I guess I'll leave my comments there. This is written in a traffic control order, so the motion is pretty simple, but certainly if there's any dialogue on the contents of it, we're happy to take a look at that.
Sure, absolutely. Chief, do you want to add anything before I ask for questions?
I would.
Okay.
I see this as an educational period, but I'm not a big ticket-writing, parking ticket-writing fan. Just to give you an example of that, we all know that the snow ordinance took place October 1st. I've taken the approach that we're going to write warning tickets for this whole month, so we've fretted off warning tickets. We're at about 90 right now, warning tickets. Some repeat offenders.
Sure.
But, looking at it, the odds of getting, my opinion is, the odds of getting snow in October are slim enough. So we really, it's an educational period, hey, let's come out of summer, let's get back into this mode, is my thought. So November 1st, we're going to start moving towards, okay, you've had three warnings, here's the ticket now.
And I think that's a great approach, you know, it's always great to educate our community and to try to get them to see it from our perspective, that we're not doing this to be punitive. We have ordinances written, and we try to enforce them to the best of our ability. So I think that's fantastic. So definitely let us know how this goes, you know, if the motion passes this evening, and what type of- because we know it is going to be complaint-driven. You guys aren't going to be over there sitting in the parking lot monitoring and watching for that minute to take over, the 30-minute mark. So, we definitely would like to hear some feedback and see if there's trends that happen. So with that, I'm going to ask our board, Terry, go right ahead.
I'm sure it was in here somewhere, but I probably saw it and I'd forgotten. How big is the ticket, what's the size of the ticket? Is it $50 or is it $5?
I think it's a $10 parking ticket.
Yeah, it's not going to be really punitive, it's, you know, it's going to, a couple bucks.
It's going to poke you.
Right, right. And hopefully that won't happen a lot, and because it is complaint-driven, it's not going to be, you know, you're not going to be out there writing tickets like East Lansing parking enforcement and stuff like that. And from the looks of it, the spaces are spread out, two in the front, three in the back, so hopefully that helps as well. And Dan, I saw your hand go up.
I have a couple of questions, but the price of the ticket, where are these tickets payable? Are they payable to City Hall, do they have to go to Inglewood County, they're payable here? That's good. I, well, most cities, it costs you $10 just to park anywhere.
Correct.
It would.
Correct.
Because this is going to be complaint-driven, and I know this is kind of getting into the weeds for a little bit, are we, who did, does the complainant, does the time on the half-hour start when we get the call? Or does it, the officer drafts, okay, we got a complaint, and then they come through a half hour later?
I think we're guys are going to go through some growing pains with it and just see how it goes. My intent is, again, if I see it sitting there for 35, 40 minutes, but it's not somebody who's going to be there for 30, it's somebody who's going to be there for hours. We're going to put the warning on there, and we're going to keep track of how many times this person's been warned. Again, you know, to say, hey.
My concern is less with you and our officers, and possibly some of our merchants who are wanting to be on you guys about it, is more with my, where my concern is with that.
Hopefully, they're not going to try for a gotcha moment, I would hope, because then that would really defeat the purpose of us putting a sign out there to let our patrons know that, listen, there are some time parking. I didn't see a picture of what the signage is going to look like in here, but do we know what the language on the sign is going to say? Is it just going to say 30-minute parking, or is there going to be a numbered? I mean, how are we going to know who to, or how is the community going to know who to call if somebody's exceeding the time limit?
Yeah, so it'll say 30-minute parking, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Okay.
That's a little language.
All right, okay. Well, I think, I think like Chief said, it's educational, there's going to be some growing pains with this. Absolutely, there's no doubt about it.
But if you don't have, he doesn't have any teeth file.
Absolutely. And just a little bit of backstory too, I think when we really first started looking at this, I know that, and I think Corey, it might have been just before you came in, I actually looked online for parking box ideas, you know, pay at the box, put your receipt in the front window and stuff like that. There is an expense to that, and I know there's a couple communities that they actually have, it's paid for themselves. They're much busier downtown. But, you know, that's, I don't know if that's next steps or several steps down the road, if we get to that point ever, but this is a good starting point, so.
I, for one, am glad that you're not looking at the parking meter thing. I park in Lansing sometimes, and it's just a pain in the neck. It's supposedly an automated system and all that. I was there one time, I think it was 20 minutes over or something like that, bang, they were right there.
Yeah, they're looking for the guy.
We're not out there to do that. I think if we were to grow exponentially in the downtown.
Yeah, it's not.
You know, yeah, I think if we were to grow exponentially in the downtown, where we had activity around the clock, and parking became such an issue in all of our lots and on the street. I said, if we were to become like that, then that's something we'd want to consider. Right, but we're just not there yet, so I think this is a good start.
One last question.
Yes.
Is it two in front, three in the back?
Yes, so if you look at the, if you look at the color. No, Terry, go, go back. Oh, you guys, oh, well, let me share with you guys though. So here's Red River, and here's the studio shop. Yep, yep. Two up front by Studio Shop corner in Zenda's, and then three in the back. Yep, it is, when we annexed it, when the old owner, the red city girl, gave us possession of it. Well, it's, they have a couple parking spots back here, but it is all completely public.
So, in seeing where these red dots are, there's an understanding that even though we're putting these time limits on these parking spaces, that there are still public parking spaces for all, all the businesses back there, not the business that these are directly in front of?
And I think that's why you guys spaced them out, so that it doesn't look like it's targeting just that back section, probably.
Yeah, I mean, we've had concerns about the north lot as well.
Yep, this portion.
There's a couple offices that, you know, if you pay attention to the cars, they're there.
They're all, yeah.
Parking there for eight to nine hours.
I got, I have one more question. Reading through the packet and then hearing what you had to say, and I know there's been a ton of man-hours put into this, so you probably got it totally figured out, but I've heard it mentioned several times that afternoon and evening is our biggest issue with, have we thought about doing 12 to 6 instead of the 8 to 6? Is there a reason we're including the morning in there if that's not a problem time?
There's no real specific reason why it was 8 versus 12. Frankly, in the policymaking process, that just everybody kept saying 8, so that's the honest answer, Dan.
I'm just thinking of Ellie's, you get, Ellie's is open for breakfast. They're the only restaurant over there open for breakfast, that was only, they're the main restaurant that that would affect. It's them, and I think Fireworks opened, well, Fireworks is making glass that early, I don't know that they're open for retail that early. It's really them and the hardware shop that I can take off time, there may be other others, but.
And to that point, the other restaurants that really, you know, hit it hard, they're opening for the dinner rush. I guess a little bit for lunch, but the dinner rush, when their employees start showing up, that's when it really hits hard, so.
Excuse me.
If you were interested in amending that to 10 or 12, I don't think that would significantly alter, you know, what the intent was, is to capture that last couple hours of the business day.
And we do have some businesses in that quadrant that are not open Monday through Saturday, like, you know, Zenda's is not open on Monday. LF A, the little small farmer's market, has very sporadic hours. Bistro is not open on Monday. So, I think we just have to see how this works, if we have to amend the times, maybe.
So, the only thing I would add, and it's only because just this weekend, Saturday, I had to go to the hardware store, and I pulled in there, and it was right about noon, and there was no parking spots, it was filled completely. So, you know, I'm wondering if you started that at noon on Saturday, if you'd still run into that same problem?
Could be.
Right.
Which was my first-hand experience with that parking lot being full.
Sure.
So I, what is it, what is it, what is it like when the theater's working?
Well.
It's just in the evening, right?
It is.
Do you do Saturday matinees or anything like that?
They do, they do some Sunday matinees.
Does it get crazy parking then?
I think downtown is pretty heavily busy when theater is in session, just because everybody's possibly out to dinner before or after. Some of the retail does stay open, but I would hate to see us do anything later than 6 p.m., just because then you're really, and especially because we're only doing one quadrant. You know, there's the bank parking lot, I think people probably park over there in the evenings if they're going downtown. I think, you know, I think a lot of the parking lots do fill up quite a bit when there's theater.
Is the bank okay with that?
I don't-
There is no formal agreement, but they've never told people.
Yeah, I don't even think it's, I don't know if there's even any signage over there for, you know, bank patrons only.
There's a lot of parking spots over there.
There's a lot. I know that we've, I think we've asked them in the past if they would be willing to be in overflow. We've never done anything with that, and that's why we had that back parking lot at the United Methodist Church.
Okay, so there's no, there's no hard feelings that are being carried forward by the theater or anything like that?
Oh, gosh, no, 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 no. Would you like to make a motion, Noah? You look like you want to make a motion.
I was going to say, let's move this along.
All right, sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve traffic control order number 33.
Thank you, thank you both. All right, if there's no further discussion, Barb, will you call the roll call for that, please?
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Okay. Next on our action item list, we have the DDA fund balance amendments, and Corey, I'll just go ahead and let you take this.
Sure, so the memo goes into great detail, I'll try to keep it short. Basically, the DDA fund is recognizing revenue both from property taxes and then our donations and our nature of the city grant. And the purpose of this was to try to summarize where we stand with all things Old Mill Park. The DDA has been the sponsor of that project. The DDA passed this motion at their meeting last week. This was, even though you see there's a decrease in the fund balance of $34,907, there's actually $29,000 of donations from last year, physically that are offsetting that, the way I look at it, which is evident in one of the tables there. So, the bottom line is, their fund is positioned to be able to finish out their project. One thing that was important to note is, when this first came about, I had planned that there was going to be a need for additional funding from another city entity, the EDC, they were willing to loan their funds, and at the end of the day, we don't have to do that. So, that was a good result. So I'm happy to answer any questions. This takes care of the funding side. I do note in here that there will likely be a change order that would come forward on the boardwalk project through the MDOT contract. So, you know, this is really step one, and that would come at a later date when everything's balanced.
All right. Any questions? I was at the DDA meeting, Noah was at the DDA meeting, it was great discussion, and it's nice to see that, just as Corey said, we don't have to borrow funds from one of the other city boards, so we did very well with this project, and a lot of good work. And if there's no questions, I'm looking for somebody to make that motion.
Make a motion to approve the budget amendments to the DDA fund as presented.
Second.
Thank you very much. If there's no further discussion or questions, Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes. All right, moving on, we have an important action item here, because this is the second-to-last meeting that Corey will be at. And so, at this time, we need to appoint an interim city manager. We have a memo in front of us, and so I am looking for that requested action, unless you'd like to add anything to it.
I'll just add, as I noted in here, many of you are holdovers from the last time we had an interim period, but for those who haven't, Rachel Piner, our city treasurer, served very successfully and very admirably in the role in 2018. So, I think Rachel has confidence of those on here, she has my full confidence. And as I told Rachel last week, when she, you know, said she'd be willing to do this, I'm hoping not to leave her with a bunch of things that are hanging on, I can't promise that, but we're trying to get through at least some of these big things with the projects, and, but I'm sure November 9th, something big will come up.
Oh, gosh, no, he did not just say that, no, no.
It's the nature of these.
But some questions, are you willing to do this?
Yeah, right.
We're hearing it from here, not hearing it from you.
You're on your first one.
And I just, you know, as Mayor can attest, or as Noah can attest to, as having the position of mayor, as I can attest to, Rachel did a phenomenal job. And I have a feeling that this length of time will be much shorter, because we have started the search earlier, and you did a tremendous job. And, you know, just like Corey said, there's some of us that are holdovers from that last time. I can assure all of you, we will be in very good hands. Corey will definitely tee her up to be as successful as she was last time. And, so, I'm looking, do you want to say anything before I ask for the motion? Any last few words?
I am willing. I do find it ironic that there's the first zoning board of appeals meeting on the 9th of November. And how long, if, you know, I don't know, plan that or not.
If his last day is the 9th, that means 9 o'clock in the morning.
No, unless it's the 8th. If his last day is the 8th, I don't know, we could, we could, you know, maybe not let him leave the building after council meeting that night, but I don't think that would go over well either unless Chief isn't in the room, so. So I might be complacent. So I might be complacent, but anyways.
Cory has, um, really done a great job of bringing me up to date on some of these projects. We've got a lot of irons in the fire, and, um, I'm really confident that Cory's leaving the city in a very good place, and, um, he's promised he's not going to change his number, so. He might not answer it as quickly as he does now, which is what I would hope for you, Cory, um, but yes, I am willing to serve.
All right, excellent. Well, with that, who would like to be the council member that makes this motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint city treasurer Rachel Piner to the position of interim city manager effective November 9th, 2021, until a full-time city manager is sworn in, compensation to consist of current city manager's salary plus $500 per week.
Thank you very much. I just want to add too that Rachel wears a lot of hats, and she also has planning knowledge, and that's so important, because it was so important last time, during that period of time when you were interim, we had some fun projects, so I'm sure you're going to be, you'll do just fine. Um, any questions at all before I call for the vote? All right, Barb?
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bowinger.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
All right, thank you Rachel so much for being willing to serve, and we'll be, it'll be easy, piece cake. All right, next on our agenda, uh, for action items is volunteers' community park equipment purchases, so Rachel?
Yeah, um, I'm sure you all are aware of the MEDC grant, um, that the Friends of Williamson Park, the campaign that just completed on Friday, and they met their $29,000 goal. So the MEDC will match that $29,000, and we're going to put in a pavilion in Volunteers' Communit- Community Park as a result of that. Um, they are ready to purchase the equipment, or, I'm sorry, the pavilion, we purchase it on their behalf because it's for a city purpose, then it's a tax-exempt, um, pass-through, basically. So, um, in order to get this pricing, the price is locked in until next week, and so I told Heather that we would get it on the agenda as soon as possible to get that ordered, and, um, they are going to have it installed. It's pretty difficult to do this kind of work beca- on a volunteer basis, like they did the, um, equipment, because of the concrete pad has to be poured at the same time that the posts go in, and it was just, um, way more, um, cost-effective and logistically much better for them to pay for that installation, and they were able to give the grants, so, um, this will cover installation and, and actual pavilion.
Excellent.
At a later time, we'll come back, um, for the amenities inside, but for right now, this will take care of what they need.
All right.
Do we have an overview of where it's actually replaced within the park?
We do, um, C2AE put together a plan 2019, 2018 timeframe. Uh, Friends of Williamson Park actually has it on their Facebook page, and they've got a very nice rendering of it. Um, I think it's just to the west of the, kind of the, uh, southwest, yeah, southwest corner of the basketball court. So there, you've got the basketball court, you'll have the pavilion, and then the plate, the new playground area.
Yes.
So it's going to be in that, um, area, and it looks like from the memo, um, installation will be scheduled for spring 2022, so it's something you need to look forward to, and, and what a great addition, um, to work that they've already done over there, especially with that, um, the new park equipment. Any questions for Rachel? Okay, I'm looking for the requested action.
We'll make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of the pavilion for Volunteers' Community Park from Miracle Play Systems Michigan in an amount not to exceed $39,985 to be reimbursed by Friends of Williamson Parks.
Thank you, do I have support?
Second.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion or questions, uh, Barb will you call the vote, please?
Pratt.
Yes.
Bowinger.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next is the IT Right Service Agreement, Rachel, you've got a memo in here for us as well.
Yep, so you guys approved the, the proposal at the last meeting, and, um, when I emailed IT Right the next day, letting them know, they sent me this, um, this agreement, and so I sent it off to Tim Perrone, he had some suggested, suggested changes, they made those changes or made, um, um, just clarified a few things with me as far as person of contact or point of contact, and then all of their forms, um, are executed via electronic means, and so I'm asking that you authorize me to execute the documents on behalf of the city as well.
All right, excellent, and Tim, thank you so much for reviewing that. Um, any questions for Rachel on this?
Just on the electronic digital signature, you have one, and it will, it'll all be taken care of through this process?
Yes. Who would like to make this requested action?
I'll move you through the service agreement with IT Right and authorize city treasurer Rachel Piner to execute the documents.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Uh, Barb will you call the roll, please?
Bowinger.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Uh, yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
All right, uh, next we have pavement patching, and Scott?
Yeah, in your packet is a memo for, uh, doing some pavement patching around town, One Way Asphalt, is able to get some asphalt down for us? In fact, uh, he called me this afternoon and said, hey, can I get going on that tomorrow? I said, uh, well, we'll give you approval tonight, I'll tell you and let you know for sure, but, um, they're prepared to actually get started tomorrow.
All right, excellent.
So a lot of times, these things happen during the year, and they're smaller amounts and so forth. It's been a crazy summer and crazy construction, and just trying to get things lined up, everything kind of fell into place all at once, so it ended up being quite a, when you tally it all together, so we brought it to you guys.
All right, excellent. Any concerns with weather? I mean, it was so rainy today, should there be any concerns tomorrow?
Actually, that's why they want to do these, because, um, it, it's, you know, small patch areas, they can handle, they dig it out, they get it propped, and then it goes down. They, they're not able to get to bigger areas where the, the rain has been sulking in and over the condition, so I'm not really that concerned about any of the spots that we've got. Um, we've had millions down as a temporary repair for a while, so it's kept the subgrain kind of dry.
All right, any questions for Scott?
Just a point, um, I live on one of these streets that's right across from my house that the repair is going to go in, so, uh, just for what it's worth, I'm.
I know, one's right in front of my driveway too, so, thank you.
Yeah, it's just like water main repairs.
No. Just so happens. All right, well, thank you Scott, and, and I'm sure that, you know, we're all appreciating it. Uh, any other questions, or who would like to make this motion for this to go through?
Make motion to approve the proposals for pavement repairs from One Way Asphalt and Exclamating Ink of Williamson, Michigan for various water main repairs and patches for the combined total not to exceed $14,500.
Thank you, thank you. Barb will you call the roll, please?
Ryan.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bowinger.
Yes.
All right, Scott, we're going to end our action items with you for the DPW pickup truck equipment purchase.
Yes, back in June, we came with, hoping that to file, uh, file, go for two orders, because it was in our, our capital improvement plan to replace two vehicles in this fiscal year, and as we were preparing to come to the meeting, a day or two before, they said, oh, wait, timeout, we're not taking F-150 orders anymore because of all of the supply chain problems.
Yep.
So we put the brakes on that, and, uh, just found out last week that, hey, we can take orders again, so the upside is, we get a 2022 model instead of the 2021 model, um, and they held the pricing to the previous contract year, so there's no change in pricing. It's a heck of a deal for a brand-new pickup truck, uh, you can't get these as a regular Joshmo customer out there, so the, the contract pricing is extremely favorable for us.
All right, any questions for Scott regarding the purchase of this truck? All right, who would like to make that motion?
Move to authorize for DPW to make a fiscal year 2021, 2022 capital purchase of the model a year, 2022 F by two, uh, four by two Ford F-150 pickup truck with a standard bed in an amount not to exceed $24,473.
Thank you, who would like to support that motion?
Second.
Oh, thank you both. Uh, if there's no other questions or discussion, Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Ryan.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bowinger.
Yes.
All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. Moving along our agenda, we do not have any discussion items, we did not receive any correspondence, so I'll move right along to our department head reports, Ian Cory.
Uh, just one other thing that wasn't on here, uh, I think it was a couple council members, but other board members have asked us about what's going on with water at the corner of High and Putt Dunk by our project site, um, so there were what we call silt bags in the catch basins, uh, and after today's heavy rains, it was very evident, and through Scott's effort, we got the drain commission office to agree that we can take those out, contractor got those out today, so.
Excellent.
Uh, for anybody that's been curious, I swear I've gotten five or six questions about that, uh, that's what was going on there, uh, we were very pleased to get that approval, and, and thanks to Scott for, um, making sure that those are out, because it, it was pretty, uh, deep today, and I was watching cars go through and, uh, you know, watch the big spray, so, uh, other than that, I didn't get to say it at, at, so I just want to thank Rachel for, uh, stepping up and agreeing to be the interim city manager, and, uh, we've got two more weeks to try to leave us in a good spot, so.
I'm sure you will, thanks. All right, any questions for Cory regarding his report? Thanks, uh, Chief?
I've got nothing, it's been, it's been, I know, you told me, I couldn't see that, you know, everything, I, I.
But you didn't say it exactly.
I want to be careful not to jinx myself, but everything's running smooth, uh, everybody's healthy, uh, we're all doing good, I'm just.
Excellent.
Waiting for our new guy to start, uh, 13th of December, I just talked to him, I'm starting to plug him into the schedule and work in our new schedule, so.
Did he graduate already?
The 10th, December 10th, no, not, not yet, December 10th he graduates, so he's, he's a downside of it, and he's excited, and.
Excellent, well, I'm sure he'll be a good addition, I'm sure, uh, he'll come back in, uh, January, let us know how his first month goes, that would be great.
You may notice we've been wearing some new coats?
Yes, I actually did, when Officer Pinter dropped off my packet, I noticed, very sharp looking, department's looking sharp.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions for Chief regarding anything? Okay, all right, moving along then, uh, we have our committee, subcommittee reports. Um, Noah and I attended DDA, we had a great meeting, um, so thank, thank council for pushing that, um, through for the, um, for the parking, I think it's going to be beneficial for our downtown area. Uh, who has attended a meeting that they'd like to speak on?
I did.
Tom?
I attended the NISA meeting last week, and it was.
So did I.
So, it was a lot of long discussion as we went over general and the, uh, building funds for 2022. Um, some good things have come out of that, due to the millage that they've received, they were able to put some monies where they felt necessary, um, including, uh, a raise for the paid-on call EMS, and, uh, there was one action item, they're going to assess Station 62, which is the Weberville station, uh, just to start getting the wheels in motion to hopefully be able to staff an ambulance in that location at some point, because right now, both ambulances are staffed at the Williamson Station, so, um, that'll be a long ways down the road, it's just starting with assessing the building to see if they can modify it to make that happen.
Have they staffed an ambulance there previously?
They used to, yes. Um, I don't know how many years ago it was, I'm not 100% sure why it, it was discontinued, but they want to do that again, they want to put a, a full staffed ambulance at the Weberville station eventually.
So Dan, what they were looking at was taking one of the basins back, and converting that into a living area and stuff, very similar to what we got down.
Okay.
So, but they had to get a structural engineer to look at all those things that they need to do.
All right, excellent, well, keep us posted on that.
So what is the audience, or ambulance wait time in Fowlerville on the other end of that thing there? How long does it take to get from here to the other end of?
We don't service Fowlerville, we don't service Fowlerville.
So, they serve, service, yeah, up and to the Fowlerville line, so the, the issue would be if you had a Williamson ambulance that had to say go to almost the Fowlerville line, and then if it was something like a car accident or something that required, it was a trauma victim, the only place that can take them is Sparrow, so if you go all the way that way, and then you flip around and come all the way back to Sparrow, you could have a pretty long commute before you got medical care.
By the time you're all the way over there, you're not taking them to Howell?
Not, for certain, there's certain hospitals that can only take certain types of gals, so such like a car accident, which could happen out in the country like that, those have to go to Sparrow.
Yeah, Sparrow's a long one, trauma.
Tommy, while we were there, they actually sent ambulances from, I think out there all the way back up to here.
And that was a unique situation, because the ambulances were there attending the NISA board meeting, typically those ambulances would have been staffed at the Williamson Station, they just happened to be in the Weberville parking lot, that's Murphy's Law.
Sure, one thing to clarify is that all NISA meetings don't happen at the Williamson Station, they share meeting space and.
Twice a year.
Yeah, twice a year, um, it takes place down at the Weberville, uh, Station 62, correct?
Correct, and it was also discussed that that might increase eventually.
Okay, all right.
It was a great meeting.
Excellent, excellent, well, thanks, and keep us posted on that, um, appreciate it. Any other reports coming in?
Uh, Tifa did meet, uh, it was a relatively short meeting, uh, we had to do a slate change